You know, if you don't want to be at home, if you're tired of being at home, you know, if you have your kids with you, you can just come read books to them.
This book right here. Duck on a Bike. The Goat Wants to Eat the Bike.
At the Central Library, a little Peruvian flute music marked the day. At the North Hollywood branch, the puppets stole the show. But for many, it's all about the books and all those things you can learn.
You tuck yourself away in a chair, a nice cozy chair, and you study.
Libraries are a saving grace for many people. People come here to learn how to read, to spend some time, to explore, to go into new worlds. A lot of people come here for the access to technology.
People can come. It's a great place to get a book, to do some job research.
For more information on the new library hours, visit www.lapl.org. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Besides the downtown and North Hollywood libraries, the other branches now open on Sundays include San Pedro, West LA, West Valley, Mid Valley, Arroyo Seco, Exposition Park, and the Hollywood Goldwyn Library. Well, it seems like every week we have news of a new business opening up in the city's historic core downtown, and this week is no exception, as residents and those who work downtown celebrate the opening of a tavern and a bar.
Downtown welcomes a new tavern and a new bar located in the same basement section of the National City Tower Lofts in the 800 block of South Spring Street.
The future of downtown LA is what we're doing today. New restaurants, bars, and things for people to come and join themselves.
The Peking Tavern is the collaborative effort of two friends, both named Andrew. Andrew Wong and Andrew Chu grew up in Southern California and studied architecture at USC. But after two decades of working as architects, they decided to change course and go into the restaurant business.
Our food concept is Beijing street food or northern homestyle cooking with a very large and amazing bar.
The restaurant even features a window where patrons can see dumplings being made right on sight.
Pork dumpling, the beef pastickers. We also have a vegetarian that we steam. And we also have some noodles. The top seller is the spicy beef noodle soup.
As for Crane's Bar, downtown resident and former bar owner Darren Crane wanted to open a watering hole for his downtown neighbors. He recalls turning down a larger space in favor of this one at the City Tower Lofts.
We were walking past the vault, and I said, "What's this?" And he goes, "Well, it's storage." I said, "I want that." He goes, "Ah, it's so small." I said, "That's what I do. I do small, little neighborhood bars."
So what's the appeal of downtown for these entrepreneurs?
It has the edge that Hollywood used to have. It's innovative. They're accepting new businesses.
And it's not just new bars and restaurants popping up downtown. A new school will soon open its doors there. But as Anna Marcos tells us, it's no ordinary school. It's a boarding school with an international flair.
Sedumid Stellé's most iconic skyscrapers, the American University Preparatory School, will have an international flair. Chinese businessman and founder Huang Wei even made sure the boarding high school has the right Feng Shui. It will be next to a hotel in a high-rise that formerly housed the old Lemley Theater. His team also made sure the horoscope provided a favorable day for the announcement.
The timing of this launch is very perfect. It could not be better, because in a few days, we'll be celebrating the Chinese New Year, ushering into the year of the horse. And the year of horse is largely considered as a year of fortune, great success.
The curriculum has its own trendy acronym, STEAM, which stands for its high-tech mix of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. The student population will be as diverse as LA, and the academic team, top-notch.
We're looking at college preparation for domestic and international audiences. We want to develop global leaders. We're interested in interdisciplinary approaches.
In the last 10 years, LA's downtown population has exploded from 10,000 to 50,000 residents, and that has brought a growing need for services, including education.
We talk a lot about the renaissance of downtown LA, the new businesses, the new restaurants, the new people coming to live here. Having a boarding school here adds to that. It shows that downtown LA is on a new path.
It helps to have this type of an experience to broaden our ability so that we can have a more peaceful world, one where we're based upon trade and competition and not war and destruction.
Renovations are already underway, and come August, the doors will open to yet another educational alternative for Angelenos and students around the world. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The high school will eventually accommodate about 360 students. Curriculum, including room and board, will be under $50,000 a year. Next up is yet another update to the ever-improving Tom Bradley International Terminal at LAX. As Anita Bennett reports, another new feature has been added, this one designed with the airport's young visitors in mind.
It's an exciting day for these LA-area kindergarteners as they take a beach break from school.
I played on the surfboards with my best friend Melanie.
It was not like a playground. It was a beach playground.
Instead of spending the afternoon in class, they were invited to try out the new beach-themed play area in the Tom Bradley International Terminal at LAX.
This is the very first children's play area at LAX, and it just signifies that we're trying to do anything we can to help our passengers, no matter how small those passengers are.
LAX celebrated the opening in December with a birthday party for the space. They even brought in a mascot, six airport therapy pups, and dozens of children from nearby Playa del Rey Elementary School.
Play area is fun, because you can go upstairs and you can see through that wave.
The play area has a series of special features to make sure no one gets hurt, including this padded floor.
All of the materials here are, of course, safe for children to be using. The floor has extra padding in it. There's lots of little surfboards for children to play in that have rounded edges.
Located in the terminal's Villagosa Pavilion, LAX Beach was designed by Westfield Airports with the facility's young passengers in mind. And these discerning critics give the play area a stamp of approval. At Los Angeles International Airport, I'm Anita Bennett for LA this week.
Los Angeles World Airport's paid for the $350,000 play area. No money from the city's general fund was used. Honoring civilian volunteers on this anniversary of the Northridge quake, the city aims to better enforce laws that take guns out of the hands of abusers, and a new park that's enjoyable for adults and kids alike. These stories and more in City Beat.
CERT or Community Emergency Response Teams is made up of volunteers who head into disaster areas to provide basic medical aid and help in search and rescue efforts. And on this anniversary of the Northridge quake, city leaders honored those volunteers.
The San Fernando Valley is the epicenter of disaster, and as a council member of the 12th district, I'm proud to say that the first CERT team was 30 members from the Devonshire Division Neighborhood Watch Group to help those who can't help themselves in a major disaster.
CERT is a program of the Los Angeles Fire Department and goes back to 1986. And just before the new year, city attorney Mike Fuhr's office rolled out new efforts to prevent gun violence in domestic abuse situations. Under the current law, any person served with a domestic violence restraining order or criminal protective order must surrender or sell their registered firearms within 24 hours. The new protocol has the LAPD working closely with the city attorney's office to help prosecutors identify those individuals, file appropriate gun charges, and ensure that no defendants fall through the cracks. The city has opened yet another new park, the State Street Recreation Center at 716 North State Street in Boyle Heights. With the help of the California Endowment and the Los Angeles Clippers Foundation, the State Street Rec Center was selected as the first of three locations for 2014 to receive a playground and basketball court refurbishment. The refurbishment included the replacement of the existing playground equipment, the addition of a fitness station, and the resurfacing of the playground area and the basketball court. Council President Herb Wesson represented the city at the recent unveiling of Sung Kyung Chang Square at the intersection of 8th Street and Western Avenue. Chang, a businessman, has for years advocated for LA's Korean-American community on issues close to their heart.
He's been an advisor to Mayor Garcetti, Villagosa, Han. He's been an advisor to my former boss, Nate Holden, Tom Labange, and to me.
Chang was born in North Korea and later made his way to Los Angeles, where he achieved the American dream by becoming a successful entrepreneur in the clothing, retail, and wholesale business.
When talk turns to education or recreation, it's often children's programs that receive the most attention. But some of the city's senior citizens are asking for continued support for programs that keep their body and mind young.
The senior citizens are putting on a show at Glassell Park Community and Senior Citizens Center's sixth annual end-of-year celebration. They start slow with Tai Chi and move seamlessly into an upbeat line dancing routine they learned in their physical fitness class. The celebration held jointly with the Los Angeles Unified School District's Division of Adult and Career Education honored local and state leaders for their ongoing support and advocacy.
Programs for older adults, health and safety, parent ed are slated to be cut in June of 2015 throughout all the public schools and community colleges throughout the entire state of California. We want to thank you for being a leader, saving our division, our programs up until June of 2015, and we need you to continue fighting for us.
For his part, Senator Kevin DeLeón says, "We must not forget those who came before us."
As elected officials, regardless of what our age may be, what generation, that it's our role and responsibility to take care of those who took care of us.
Mayor Eric Garcetti and council member Gil Sadio, both of whom were unable to attend but represented at the event by members of their office, were also honored for their commitment to the city's senior citizens.
So each one of you that's sitting here, that makes those decisions at the state level, board level, we ask you to save programs for adult education. Join the mayor to save the programs for adult education.
This is truly a celebration, a celebration of the year of participating in programs and classes where you've been able to strengthen your muscles, where you've been able to expand your mind, and really get in touch with your soul.
And this group of seniors made sure no one was safe from some much-needed exercise. Even Senator DeLeón got pulled onto the dance floor for a few shakes, proof that even at their age, these seniors have still got a lot to teach the younger generation.
In this week's list of things to do, a weekly cardio class, music of Hawaii comes to Little Tokyo, and Japanese taiko drumming at UCLA.
Fitness guru and high-level trainer Nathan Ford will lead a new donation-based fundraising fitness program at the Barnes-Dahl Art Park every Saturday from 9:00 to 9:45 a.m. You're invited to take part in this weekly 45-minute cardio class on the West Lawn. Donations will benefit Barnes-Dahl Art Park. This high-energy group fitness class offers a full-body workout combining strength training and cardio suitable for the active individual. The first class is on Saturday, January 25. Barnes-Dahl Art Park is located at 4,800 Hollywood Boulevard. More details can be found at barnsdahl.org. Hawaii's famed guitarist, vocalist, and songwriter Willie Kahai Alii, better known as Willie K., is back at the Japanese-American Cultural and Community Center on Saturday, January 25. He'll bring his unique brand of music, from traditional and contemporary Hawaiian to blues and rock, to audiences at 7:30 p.m. The JACC is located at 244 South San Pedro Street in Little Tokyo downtown. Go to jaccc.org for ticket prices and other details. According to a story written in one of Japan's oldest books, taiko drumming was created to lure the goddess of sunlight from her cave. On Sunday, January 26, you can help lure the goddess from her hiding place when you attend the Free Family Jam Drum Up the Sun Taiko event from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Fowler Museum at UCLA. UCLA's Kyoto Taiko will put on a performance. You'll also get to make your own drum out of recycled materials. The Fowler Museum is located at the north campus at UCLA. Detailed maps and parking instructions can be found by going to fowler.cla.edu. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
The Department of Recreation and Parks is helping youngsters show off their athletic skills and earn some coveted bragging rights. Anita Bennett explains.
After the regular season ends for young flag football and soccer players, the athletes have a chance to test their skills through the Department of Recreation and Parks' annual Valley Shoreline All-Star Playoffs.
It's fun, like, to play with my friends and get involved in playing a sport.
The best of the best young players recently made it to the championship tournament. It was held on the field at Balboa Recreation Center in Encino.
Lots of different parks. I think we have Balboa, Granada Hills, Cheviot. Pretty much everybody who had fall sports like soccer and flag football participated or at least submitted a team into this tournament.
All of the teams were made up of players who normally participate in soccer and flag football games at their neighborhood city-run parks.
The competition was great in this tournament, and we were happy to be in it. The Rec Center put on a great show, and we're glad to be part of our Northridge Rec Center, and we love it.
The tournament was open to kids between the ages of nine and 12 years old.
I've always liked playing flag football. I like running around the field and yanking the flag off somebody while they're running and throwing it back.
The tournament currently attracts about 150 young athletes. Organizers say it helps keep them busy, they make new friends, and they remember this experience for the rest of their lives. I'm Anita Bennett for LA this week.
For more information on joining these youth sports programs, contact your neighborhood city-run recreation center. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Getting LA back to work. Have you been recently laid off? You may qualify for a U.S. Department of Labor federally-funded training and placement program. Additional support services are available. A counselor from one of our 18 work source centers will meet with you, review your eligibility, and discuss next steps. You may qualify for paid training up to $10,000. Select a training of your choice in any industry. Additional training may open up new career avenues. You will receive job placement services. Our goal is to get you back in the workforce. There are many work source centers located throughout LA City ready to serve you now. To see if you qualify, contact one of our many resource centers. Please call 311 or visit www.wiblacity.org/B2W.
911 emergency operator 271.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti. I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies. 911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard. If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond. Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Los Angeles Police Department, what are you reporting?
Hi, this is Caratello family.
We have a window schedule that's border hurts.
You're watching Channel 35, our city, our channel.
The 22nd of January, 2014. John Paul Chambers calling all members present to the field. Early, 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 eh? Mitchell Farrell. Early, early's good, too. Early, come on, let's relate. Avak, the target is here. Avak, thank you very much. Mr. Sadio, thank you very much. Mr. Wesson, as always, calling members. Mr. Bane, Mr. Bustayno, Mr. Weejar, Mr. Corret, Mr. Macario, Mr. Marquinez, Mr. Park. Mr. Corret, you answered the call. Good job, Paul. Mr. Bane, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Weejar. Mr. Weejar's here. Macario's here. Mr. Fuente, thank you very much for coming in. Very good, we got 10 members. Let's get Teddy, Russ, all you guys, go on that channel 35 for us. Good morning. This is Lindsey, the 22nd day of January, 2014. Mr. Corden, the Los Angeles City Council, please follow the roll.
Plutin, Gilbana, Bustayno, Sadio, Angel, Condes, Reso, Reso, Herr, Macario, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, 10 members present, and Coram, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
And Mr. Weejar moves. Mr. Fuente seconds. So ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Corret's moves. Mr. O'Farrell seconds. So ordered.
Mr. President, there are requests from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file items 1H, 1I, 1K, 1P, and 1R, and to continue items 1D, 1J, and 1M to February 5, 2014. Further, there's a request from a member to continue item 24 to February 4, 2014.
Without objection. So ordered.
Very good.
All right, Mr. Item 14 to be continued request? Without objection, would you add that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Items 1 through 14 are items noticed for public hearing.
Got it. We want 14 continued to when?
A month? One month, please.
30 days.
30 days would be February 21st.
Very good.
All right. Very good, sir. Would you like to do that without objection?
Without objection.
Very good. Mr. President, on those items remaining before us, you do have cards on items 1, 3, and 8.
Okay, so on those items 1, 3, and 8, we'll call those specials. Any specials, member? Any specials? Any specials? So on the balance, Mr. Clerk, could we vote on those?
Yes, sir, we may.
Okay, so let's open the roll on the balance of issues. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, that brings us to items 15 through 24. They're items for which public hearings have been held. Councilmember Bonin wishes to hold item 19 special, please.
19 special. Members, any other items special on that? On those items, any other items special? So on the balance, Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
12 ayes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. Items 25 through 28 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, let's open the roll for consideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
So ordered now. Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir. We have cards on all items in that section.
All items, so they will be called special on 25 through 28, correct?
Yes, sir.
Good. All right.
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, item 29 is an item noticed for public hearing. There are no cards on that matter.
Well, let's take that matter up right now. Is that okay, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
So on 29, members, seeing no one to speak, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
So ordered. Next.
Mr. President, that takes council to items called special or public comment on items not on council's agenda.
Good. Let me just see right here. Hold on just a second. We're going to take this item up number 3 right now. John Walsh, please. Item number 3. And as the gentleman comes up, I want to thank ITA for the great job that they do and all the work. And those of you back at Channel 35.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. And this is number 3 again. This concerns proposed improvement and maintenance of the Mesa Avenue and York Boulevard Street Lighting District. Or you can go straight to Jay Walsh Confidential. This is the continuing hearing and present report of protests. What the protests are, are people who live there who believe that they're not being maintained these lights, and they shouldn't have to pay for them. I'm talking about the property owners, because the, and the renters, that's passed down by the property owners to the renters. And these are a number of hearing protests about lighting. The lighting is done well, but it is done at much more expensively than it should be done. And I'd just like to say, the reason you cannot see my Jew face on here is Mr. Laban has told Channel 35 never to show John Walsh his Jew face on television. Deny it.
That was Mr. Walsh's comments. And Mr. City Attorney, I deny that. And Mr. Walsh, I deny that. If you saw last time, your face was placed up there. But I'm sorry you say that, Mr. Walsh. Next, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Corretz, you have something you want to say?
Actually, not on this specific item.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, because we have this all the time. We have some very specific opportunities for affected people to protest. And then we have public speakers that have nothing to do with the specific item. And just will speak on the idea of liens or the idea of lighting districts. Is there not some way to limit it when we discuss these things? A lien is on the agenda so that the person that has the property has the opportunity to protest.
Well, I think you make a very good point. Instead of having the city attorney dialogue with that, I think with Mr. Wester, the leadership, if you live in the lighting district area, if you live in the, if you're impacted by that or on the neighborhood council, maybe that would be a voice. But instead of dialoging here, because it's not an agenda item, Mr. City Attorney, do you have any brief comments you want to make?
I would like to add, each instance of whether someone is on topic or off topic is a case-by-case basis and involves the discretion of the person in the chair. But your point is well taken as to how tightly to control that discretion.
Being off-topic, it's another thing having nothing to do with the reason why it's there. I mean, Mr. Walsh, in this case, from my point of view, could not be on topic because he's not affected by that district. So is there some way to have people only speak to the actual purpose that some of these items are on?
What I would suggest, you write a letter to the president of the council asking that the policy be changed and have the city attorney review it. So that would be the order. Thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, we got a vote on that item?
Yes, sir, we do.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Next item will be number 8. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Number 8. This concerns the Sunset Boulevard and Gordon Street Lighting District. I have been a citizen, I have been a resident of the city since 1976. I am affected by that lighting. I pass by that lighting, and I have the, and no matter what somebody else says here on the board, I am affected by this. And the city attorney can stop me and say, I'm not affected by this. I'm 100% against the, in favor of the protests. And I just want everyone to know, we are all affected by the lighting, except Mr. Corretz doesn't want my Jew lip up here. HollywoodHighlands.org, get used to my Jew lip.
Mr. City Attorney, that is his speech. He made that statement. We don't agree with it. We ask now the clerk to open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 25, called special for cards. Item 25.
John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Constitutional right. My great-great-grandfather died in the Revolutionary War. It's called the First Amendment. You're all newcomers, huh? Okay, this concerns Magnolia Boulevard and White Oak Street Lighting. I have passed by these streetlights many, many times. And I will tell you that they are generally well-maintained, especially since we got rid of the old system. And but, the amount of money you are charging the property owners in that district is ridiculous. Now, if you want to arrest me, arrest me for a good reason. I don't care, 6 million of us died, and if Corretz wants to arrest me, HollywoodHighlands.org. Take back your 13 seconds.
No other speakers? It's over the roll? Close the roll?
Arnold Sachs.
Mr. Sachs, I don't have your card right here. Well, I don't have your card.
So then keep going. There's Michael, just you can ask him.
Well, then, if you come up to the microphone right now.
I know I put a card in. Thank you, sir. And even though I don't, no longer live in the city, I address this item in comparing it to item like 1 through 7 with the hearings on the improvement and maintenance of lighting districts, whereas this item sets a hearing date just for the maintenance of the lighting district. Now, we just heard Mr. Corretz ask for reasoning behind allowing people to speak on items that are not part of, whether it's in their district or not. So maybe the city attorney and Mr. Corretz could clarify the Brown Act. The Brown Act states that you're not supposed to speak on items that are not on the agenda. This is an agendized item. I'm asking a question about why this only states maintenance when other items on the agenda state maintenance and improvement. So maybe Mr. Corretz could address the difference, because when you make improvements to property, you get a higher assessment on your value, property assessment, which affects the taxpayers. So maybe Mr. Corretz could address that, because that's part of the agenda. And the Brown Act only states not to speak on items that aren't on the agenda. It doesn't say anything about items that are on the agenda. So Mr. Corretz, we're waiting, hopefully that you will address that in the same way that you address the fact that people who aren't associated with items on the agenda get to come up in front of the council. And again, I'd like to also thank the council, they're doing a magnificent job of putting everything in the committees. Next holiday, maybe President Weston will give you two days off. It's so ridiculous. Anyway, back to the Brown Act and addressing those items. When you start addressing items that people come up to talk about, then you should be able to address items that people don't have a horse in that race. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right. Before we move on to the next item, Mr. Laban, I really want to thank you for the photographs that you took at the MLK Parade, for all of the members that came over to our side of town, and you even have, where's Mr. Sergeant Johnson?
Right over there, around here somewhere.
Who was there?
Right here.
Dressed as an LA Dodger.
Right, but he was good. He had 331, I just want to let you know.
Okay, so let's move to item 26, which was held special by Mr. John Walsh. John, if you, oh, I see you. Mr. Walsh, item 26.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I'll talk about that under public comment or just Jay Walsh Confidential. Okay, this concerns the hearing date for the maintenance of the Laurel Canyon Boulevard and Cheswick Street Lighting District. Now, I don't spend too much time there, but I want everybody to realize, if you've ever passed through there, your life depends on good lighting there. If there's bad lighting, you'll be in an accident. Now, Mr. Corretz says I shouldn't be allowed to speak. You shouldn't hear my Jew lip. But I'm telling you right now, as a, even, I'm half Catholic and half Jew, so.
Stay on the subject.
But the director of Bureau of Street Lighting, we are 100% in favor of the lighting. I've said over and over again, the lighting is good, and we've said over and over again, the lighting shouldn't cost this much. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Item 26. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Members, let's move on to item 27. I have cards from Mr. Sachs, Mr. Walsh, and Mr. Herman on item 27. Please come forward. Okay, so I have two passes from Mr. Sachs and Mr. Walsh, so that leaves Mr. Herman. If you please come forward.
Los Angeles Housing Under the Chair, Mr. Sedia and Mr. Puentez. We're talking about, once again, reap, which I call ripoff. How the city continues to cite you, make you pay these enormous fees for citations, then they take your money, say it's going into the general public piggy bank, and then they turn around and says, oh, but wait a minute, we thought we removed you from the rent escrow, but yet they keep sending you a letter to your home stating that for some reason, you are still responsible for these citations, these violations. And I'm pretty sure, and damn right sure, that not one of you in Los Angeles wants to see people become homeless for these ridiculous, unaccountable actions made by Housing Authority and Building and Safety. Over and over, we keep hearing the cry of the people. And yet, with little attention, without little representation, or reform to your solution of adopt resolutions for the rent escrow account? Abolish it? Change it? And all again, Dion, it's better to reform something that is not working and hinders the public, right, Mr. Corretz? Hinders the public. Because if we can't speak about issues on the agenda, Mr. Corretz, we are futile, and we have nothing good to do for the city of Los Angeles and to all you Angelinos who are affected.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, we're going to now move to item number 1. Gary Kovacic or Kovacic, Mr. Walsh. I think I have Leo Hernando, Jenny King, if you guys would prepare. Oh, yes, sir. If you'd identify yourself.
Sure. Gary Kovacic, Sullivan Workman &amp; D, the attorney for the property owner at 3506 West Washington Boulevard. My comments are only to item 1N. Is it now the time to go forward? Our client objects to the confirmation of the proposed lien and the amount specified, but I'm here merely to ask for a continuance. We had requested it by phone and letter, and were told we had to make a personal appearance to request a continuance. Our client is out of town on a pre-planned big trip, and we'd like this matter continued to March of 2014, if that is okay?
Mr. Clerk, can we, could you give me a date that would be in March, maybe the first or second week in March?
Very good, sir. That would bring us to March 5, Wednesday, March 5.
Okay, sir, so we'll do March 5.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is item on 1N.
Yes, correct, Mr. Clerk, you have that?
Yes, sir, that's item 1N.
3506 Washington.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Without objection, that'll be the order. And if you could please identify yourself, sir.
Yeah, I'm Mr. Leo Hernandez, and I'm here for item 1F. And I'm here to request a continuance. I'm going to work out with Mr. Charles, some kind of payment plan.
Okay, give me a couple of minutes. The councilperson from that area is not here at this point. Let me find their staff and see if they would be, if that would be fine with them.
Okay.
So if you give me a moment.
Sure.
And what we could do, Madam Clerk, or let's kind of hold this till I get a response from Council District 15.
Okay, thank you.
And that item was 1F, I believe, 9402 Wilmington. Okay, next, do I have a Gina King?
Jenna King. Jenna King.
Go right ahead.
Well, I didn't.
Start her time.
I just spoke with, I don't want to say his name incorrectly, I'm sorry. Apparently, he's been very busy and unable to return my car. Charles Cabalila, I don't want to say it incorrectly, Cabalila? So I think we're going to talk and try to work it out. So can we extend this? Get an extension on the time?
Okay, what item specifically? Or what is the, on the, the address? What's the address?
Oh, it's 2003 South Corning. I submitted a protest, but I have other information. I just am not very organized.
Okay, why don't we look at, Mr. Clerk, a two-week continuance?
Uh-huh.
And give me a date?
Very good, sir. Two weeks is February 5.
Okay, so you're due back, ma'am?
Yes.
On February 5, and I will afford you the opportunity to have your conversations. So you, your item has been continued?
Okay.
To February 5 of next month?
Okay. Thank you.
Right? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Without objection, that'll be the order? Is it a Joseph Sukotai? Joseph? An address on Melrose? An address on Melrose? Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, it's, my understanding, we need to reconsider item 21, is it? Because there's an amending motion that's being circulated, so it's substituted, is my understanding. So let's vote on reconsideration, item 21. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, so we will hold that as everything is being circulated, and we'll move on to the next. We'll do some general public comment cards at this time. Mr. Walsh, I have, where's John? Okay, so Mr. Walsh, I have you, and then after you, I have Mr. Sacks and Brian Barajas, are you, I see him in the back. So Brian, you're third. This is general public comment.
General public comment. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Please come to my website now. I have asked you, I've asked Mr. Labange, it's in his district and it's bordering on Mr. O'Farrell's district. This is 1800 Argyle, the 10-story glass tower at the northeast corner of Argyle and Yucca. It is 10 stories, it is full of crack cocaine and gangsters. I want everybody to know, when they come to Hollywood, that the drug dealers run wild, the police that are supposed, now, it's covered, if you come, I have a picture of it up there, covered with graffiti, windows broken out, gangsters controlling the whole street where I live. Now, the LAPD says they don't see anything there. Well, maybe, Mr., the captain should go to and have his eyes checked at the Braille Institute. I ask everyone, I ask the L.A. Times to come and see what's happening. I'm telling everybody, don't come, every tourist, stay away from Hollywood. Gangs, rape, killing, what's going on? It's out of control. 1800 Northeast now. And of course, they don't show my Jew face on there because of the worst anti-Semite and anti-black person in the world, and that's Tom Labange, anti-African-American. He's trying to clean us out of the Hollywood. He's throwing the feed list, the feeding stations out. He wants only people with his white skin in Hollywood, except the minority drug dealers who sell to the tourists. And the only reason you should come to Hollywood as a tourist is if you want to buy crack cocaine, you want to buy pills, you want to buy marijuana, you want to buy any narcotics, come to Hollywood, and I can guarantee you, the police will not bother you. Just come to my corner and see what's happening right there. You disgust me, all of you, to allow this to happen. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. And as, one second, Mr. Labange, as Mr. Sacks is moving forward, Mr. Clerk or Madam Clerk, we do want to continue item 1F. That's the Wilmington address for two weeks, and that would be when?
Mr. President, two weeks brings us to February 5.
Okay, so that item will be continued to then. Mr. Labange, as Mr. Sacks approaches.
Can I ask the city attorney, is there anything about hate speech that is? And if not, if Mr. Walsh, would you come over to the ropes and explain to me why would you say such horrible things about someone who has worked with you over the years? Because I do love all people, and for him to say that hurts me as a human being, and I think it would hurt us all, so.
And I agree, Mr. Labange, but chat with him privately on that, if you would. Mr. Sacks, sorry about that delay, but this is general public comment, and the floor is yours.
Yes, sir, and I was actually gonna say, it must be that the council's having a bad hair day today, because you're getting some, anyway, again, I bring up the fact that on Thursday, the board, the Metro Board is going to introduce a motion to eliminate the 16-year standing that allowed the public to address items on the non-consent calendar. Maybe a minute apiece, but it was a minute that the public was allowed to address the board. $3 billion in debt right now, $40 billion in construction planned, and they're gonna allow the public three minutes. So, in doing that, I thought I'd read you a letter. This is from the County Board of Supervisors. They had a property transfer with the Gold Line, and this is from January 25, 2011, from the Gold Line Construction Authority, Foothill Extension. They write to Mr. Scherhoff regarding the Arboretorium Improvement Agreement. Again, it's dated January 25, 2011, and includes board members Doug Testator, Ed Reyes, Second Vice President, Councilmember, City of Los Angeles, Keith Hanks, by the way, you haven't adopted, you haven't appointed somebody to the Gold Line to take his place, John Fasana, Bill Bogart, Laura Loramendi, and Dale Evans. And what's interesting about this letter dated January 25 is that four of you, plus the city attorney, were in California Legislature. And in October of 2011, you actually voted to change the name of the Blue Line Construction Authority to the Gold Line Construction Authority. So who did the county deal with? And how did that happen? If it wasn't legal, how could you deal with it? Now, Mr. Krikorian isn't here to address the state public oath, as well as he addressed the Brown Act, and that's too bad, because.
Thanks, Arno. Thank you, thank you. Brian, are you, yeah, there you are. Mr. Barajas, please come forward.
I'm gonna make some clarifications today. The first will be the Assemblyman Roger Hernandez, who put the ACR 73 at the Sacramento, that situation with passage of the Glass-Steagall Law, not the state, but to call the federal government to pass it. He's under attack. His district, which I don't think it was a coincidence, or maybe it was, I'm not sure, but the fire in his district, Glendora, I mean, was it an accident or not? Who knows? But, and then, I want to make another clarification. In the Los Angeles Times, it wasn't just Sidiyo. They state that it was current price and the President Wesson who are involved in criticizing J.P. Morgan Chase. So it's an effort. It's a, it's, it's an effort that we are moving towards. Now, let me make another point. Under the Brown Act, but I don't, I cite the Brown Act, but it's in the Constitution that every single member does everything in their power to call on the federal, the state, all. I'll give you an example. Elizabeth Warren's bill, Senate bill, or S 1282, there's a companion in the House, H.R. 3711. If you all move to call on the federal government, to, the Congress in particular, to pass the Glass-Steagall Act as soon as possible, then we can deal with too big to fail, too big to jail, and the bankruptcy of that current system. This is within the jurisdiction. This is in your interest, not just for yourselves, but the interest of everyone in this room and those who are listening.
Okay, thank you. Members, I need a quick vote on reconsideration. Mr. Herman, there's no applause. I need a quick vote on reconsideration on item one. So for reconsideration, if we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Herman on item one, if you want to speak, come forward. Item number one, Mr. Herman, come forward.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you.
Protests and objections, notifications, and at the request of the public to petition all these citations, all these costs to an address at 9572 North Bocque Avenue, a lien for $660. West Gorham Avenue, $2,817. The list goes on and on, A through R. And the city has a reputation, yes, a reputation of citing all you Angelinos in order to build up their deficit loss, because the City of Los Angeles continues to mismanage and be so dysfunctional at the way it creates business that it's gonna charge you on all these expenses. And, and did you get it? The persons that came up here to speak are asking for extensions. Think of the people in your neighborhoods who are in foreclosure because of these citations. This is bogus. Bunch of nonsense by selfish individuals within this council to take advantage of people's rights to your home, to where you live, and how it's gonna go about and cite you. And yes, it's understandable that Mr. Labange doesn't favor what he claims is hate. No, it's not hate. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, he's talking about what he dislikes. And so let's keep this.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item.
Get back on subject, Mr. Herman.
We, the public, petition and want this city to acknowledge that all these bogus costs, these injuries to the public are your selfish indulgence to make money for this city.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to take another general public comment card. Mr. That was, oh, no, we have to re-vote on item one. So let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And, and that's as previously amended, sir.
Thank you. Let's move to item 21. The substitute motion has been circulated, I believe, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, and that's a two-vote item. The first vote on whether to substitute or not, and then if passes on the actual substitute motion itself.
Okay, let's vote on the substitution. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now, let's move on to a vote on the actual issue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let me call another general public comment card. Mr. Herman, by chance, did you sign your card, Bill of Rights, general public comment? If so, please, I have a card that says, Bill of Rights, First Amendment. I'm assuming that's your general public comment card. And Mr. Akala, if you, you're up next, sir. Yes, Mr. Herman, he's after you.
Yes, I'm talking about the Bill of Rights, 1 through 10. Simple to understand. Number one, your First Amendment. Here in council chambers, they're avoiding our rights, not only as constituents and speakers, but they're randomly choosing how to interrupt our public speaking. They themselves do not even know the full rights of your First Amendment rights, because if they did, they wouldn't be so rude and inept to challenge the speakers. If you wish to debate an issue with us like now, Mr. Coretts, Mr. Labange, come on, we're right here. We want to debate about the reasons the city is in a decline financially, and we want to point out the issues, the life experience of your constituents, that you have interrupted their lives. And to our guests who are here today listening, yes, they've interrupted our lives. How? They don't want you to speak against our local government. They don't want to hear anything. And going off subject, because I have Jose Weezer here, where is Jose Weezer when it comes to immigration? There is no Jose Weezer, but yet Jose Weezer wants you to vote for him for his election coming. I say to you, no vote, no vote for Mr. Weezer. And yes, I wore my special shirt underneath me stating that, hey, look, sexual harassment here at City Hall is a misuse of the taxpayer's funds. Misuse. All we're trying to do is direct attention to the most appropriate action this city must take to have a comprehensive idea for what is best interest for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akala. Please come forward. Juan Akala?
It is amazing. Two days, two, three days ago, this little spaceship woke up after a three-year hibernation, and they're going to drop something on the tail of a comet. You see how advanced we are technologically, and you see how retarded we are in real estate? Look at all those, all those finds on people that are about to lose their place, and you keep making ordinances that keep people homeless. You are running a homeless-making system. You are a bunch of asses. See? Real estate is riding on the back of asses.
No applause.
Donkeys. You are a bunch of donkeys obstructing people from having a place to live. Ass also means asshole. It's just, you know, idiomatic expressions. You're a bunch of assholes. We all are, because we allow it to happen. The people are to blame. We are all a bunch of assholes. We are surrounded by assholes keeping each other homeless. We are all greedy and stupid. Why should a house be worth $5,000 one year and $1 million the next year? Isn't that stupid? I mean, everybody should have a place to live, whether it's a tiny little place, but no, we keep each other homeless.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move, Mr., no, we're gonna move to item 19, if Mr. Bonin is ready. Okay, then the floor is yours, Mr. Bonin. Bonin, item 19.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, Mr. Parks and I were both present for an amazing event in Los Angeles. It was the groundbreaking of the Crenshaw Line, which is going to help transform transportation here in Los Angeles and is gonna help revitalize the economy and provide jobs in one part of this city. Unfortunately, the people who live in that area have no guarantee that they're gonna get construction jobs from that project. Unfortunately, people in generally Los Angeles do not have any guarantee that they're gonna get any jobs on those construction projects. This happens all the time at Metro and with most of our major infrastructure projects. We just bought hundreds of millions of dollars in railcars, and there's no guarantee that people here in Los Angeles County, in Los Angeles the city, in our, in our council districts and our neighborhoods are gonna get jobs working on those projects. And it's because there's federal money involved. And even if we get 10 cents from the federal government, we are not allowed to do local hiring preferences. Fortunately, we have some great congressional representation. My Congresswoman, Karen Bass, with the support of most of our delegation, has a bill pending in Congress, and this before us today would officially put us in support of that, that would change that and would allow an agency like Metro to consider local hiring in awarding these contracts. It would be a huge boost to our economy, and it would be the right thing to do here in Los Angeles. It's even more important now, because here in Los Angeles, we're actually paying for most of the cost of our transportation projects. The federal government is giving us a little bit. The federal government is giving us a little bit of money, but because of Measure R, the local taxpayers are paying the bulk of it. And if we're paying the bulk of it, we deserve to be getting the jobs from it. So I'm, I'm standing today to, to underscore this, this piece of legislation in Washington, put us on record in favor of it, and make sure that as we move our transportation system into the future, that we're also creating good local paying jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Let's prepare to vote on this item, members. Mr. LaBonde.
Does local hiring, uh, this, uh, include Compton? Does local hiring, is it just LA City? Or is it also the county? Is it, I'm standing up for Compton right now.
What, what, no, yes. In short, yes. What Mrs. Bass, what Mrs. Bass, Ms. Bass's bill would do would allow local agencies to create their own local hiring guidelines and preferences and considerations in awarding contracts. So yes, it could.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonde. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'd please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now we'll move to, uh, item 28. I have some cards on that, uh, item. So let's go through the cards. Uh, Mr. Walsh, one minute, Mr. Walsh, I'm informed. Mr. Sacks. And Mr. Herman, if you'd come down, please. And Mr. Herman has a minute as well.
John Walsh, bloggy at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is probably the most important issue we have here. This concerns film and TV production jobs. Now, if you've been reading The Trades or even the LA Times, you know that, that shooting on the street in LA is absolutely, it's gone, it's fallen apart. It's, it's just, it's dived to almost nothing. Now, why? Because these people, the, the studios who do a great job entertaining us realize that every time they go on the street, they're harassed by drug, shoot on the street, they're harassed by drug dealers. The cops do nothing for them. So what do they do? They go to Phoenix. They go all over the United States to do, and this most has mostly to do, not with studio work, with on-location. Because I want everyone to realize, if you're on location in a Hollywood movie in LA, you are taking your life in your hands. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Next, uh, well, Mr. Sacks, are you coming down? Then we'll put Mr. Herman in front of you till you get here. Mr. Herman, come on.
Motion from Mr. Kogorian relative to salvaging the ad hoc committee on film and TV production jobs. Yes, today's daily news has it. Yes, we're going to keep the film industry here. Why? Because it creates jobs, jobs that this city has chased away for the last 10 years. The last 10 years that I've been coming here, there's no improvement in jobs in California, let alone in Los Angeles. So with one good thing to say, the film industry, we, the public, welcome you. But now, how comprehensive will this city be to allow you to film pretty much anywhere as you please? So to resolve all this and ask for the productions of TV, like we had earlier this morning, of film, in conclusion...
Thank you, thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Sacks, please come forward.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. And, um, I've been following this a little bit. And so I, I've collected some news articles that have appeared in newspapers. And this one is, um, from November 27, 2013. And the story mentions that the California Film Tax Credit is not available to films or studios, films with budgets that are over $75 million. Nor does this film credit deal with anything regarding post-production, which includes music and digital scoring for the movies. Nor does it have any relevance to studio subsidiaries or specialty film units, which you read about every day in the newspapers. There's Hollywood's relationship with China. There's Hollywood's relationship with England, where studios are flourishing. There is a, what's called a residual payment. They talk about musicians and people that score movies, movies, and how that work has moved out of the city. Because there's no requirement that people get film subsidies, need to have that money trickle down to the end result, which would be musicians scoring movies and, and the like. It talks about the digital age and how movie studios are making so much money from their DVDs and videos. Doesn't affect the film studio, um, tax credit. These are things that need to be addressed. This move, this article stated that Louisiana spent $7.29 in 2010 for every dollar in film tax subsidy that it gave out. That's a loss of $6.29. How does the city hope to maintain its budget? Oh, I know. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. Akala.
I have seen it happen over and over. When people are trying to film something, uh, the cop will come up to him in Venice Beach and say, "Do you have a permit to be shooting a little video here?" A permit just for people taking a video of each other or, or a small crew going around the boardwalk filming homelessness? And the cops are right there. "Where is your permit? Where is your filming permit?" So how are you making it possible for the film industry to survive in this stupid city? Everything you do is to collect revenue from everybody, every single thing you do. And it is the wrong way to approach society. First, house everybody. And then let everybody produce and contribute to the society. You don't need to be taxing everybody with parking meters and, and permits for this, permits to sell peanuts on the street. Come on, you got the street vendors running all over the place. You are stupid. You, you get a salary and nobody else has the right to have a salary. What a stupid way to run society.
Thank you. Okay, let's, uh, prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, I've got a couple of more general public comment cards. We'll, uh, move to that right now. Excuse me. Do I have a Terry H.? Is it Willborn or Will Brew? Terry, followed by Antonio Ramirez. Yes, sir. Please come forward. General public comment.
On transportation, on 22, 21, and 27. Uh, documents have been stolen and people have been murdered, uh, along the way. Burge family have, uh, jumped on various people and using police force to do so. So I decline on the transportation. Because also, I bought boats. I bought trucks on September the 3rd through the 8th, and they was all stolen. I bought buses, Ju- July 11th, going to Chicago and the St. James Common Church. They attacked it, various people. They are abusing the system that they are. I don't want to stay on transportation too much because I, I, like I said, they have been murdering people, they've been attacking people, they've been using my boats for their purposes since 2007. And I bought these boats and ships in 2006. And I continue to buy today. Uh, the other items, rent. These houses, my brokers, has been abused. Every house in the state of California, every business in the state of California belongs to me and my brokers. My brokers have been abused. The documents and this has been tampered with. I can prove everything I say. And if you need, uh, they, my children is going around collecting rent, not giving notice to these people, going to give them a sign.
Mr. President, it doesn't appear he's talking about something within the jurisdiction of the city.
Okay, come on. Now, first of all, Mr. Herman, you sit down. Save his time. We're gonna give you 10 more seconds, uh, sir.
Other items, um, airports, Edison. We, and me and my cousin, were working on the C C E C electric. Edison was jumped on, uh, by Anthony Warner, or Anthony Whiskey. She was working at where Fargo.
Wrap it up, Jerry.
And in doing so, I believe Edison and I are the owners of the electric.
Thank you. Thank you. And, uh, thanks for coming down. Ms. Ramirez, please come forward. General public comment.
Hello. Deport, deport, deport. We have a vicious and epidemic of Latino Hispanic gangbangers. You can also deport most of these Latinos, uh, politicos. Case in point, we have problems at the Century City and Beverly Hills and the UCLA and Westwood-Wilshire corridor. You have expensive high-rises. Um, and let me give you just, uh, this case in point of this one high-rise. This unsafe, noisy, filthy, and expensive full-service high-rise building located at 10535 Wilshire Boulevard, Los Angeles, California 90024, has employed nasty, vicious, brash employees with no standards of civility from Africa, i.e. Antena and AWAT, and Latino gangbangers who sabotage the quality of life for its good law-abiding tenants. And, uh, the West LA Police Department, they, uh, they don't do anything. They just sit here and ask you, uh, "Do you have any mental problems?" Because, again, they're pandering pussies. You have tenants at 1604, Units 1604, and Unit 704 and Deck 06, who are vicious, noisy, and, um, outlandish and drug dealers. And they break into your homes and vandalize your properties in a high-rise building where you're paying over $3,000 a month. And no one, not even the West LA Police Department, they should be castrated and, uh, fired. No one has taken any measures to reduce the crimes in these Westwood-Wilshire high-rise buildings. Many elderly are being robbed, these gangbangers and drug dealers, and also these noisy tenants. Just go ahead and conspire and break into these tenants, especially the elderly, who don't even know what's going on, and yet they see items missing. So again, it's not just in East LA, it's also in, uh, high-rise.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Attorney, that concludes, uh, Mr. Herman, no applause. Mr. City Attorney, that concludes, uh, general public comment. Mr. Clerk, where are we now on the agenda?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements, announcements, members, announcements. Could everyone please rise for adjourning motions? Could everybody please rise for adjourning motions? Please, uh, be, be quiet, Mr. Akala. We're in adjourning motions. Mr. Wezar?
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Uh, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Ruth Powell Melton, a councilman Angelino with deep roots here in Hollywood and at Hollywood High School in particular. Ruth was born at Hollywood Presbyterian in 1930. She worked as an actress, toy maker, and model. But most important was her role as a maternal figure to an extended family. Ruth's parents met at Hollywood High School in 1928. She graduated from there in 1949. And in 1958, married Jerry Melton, who later served dramas, as a drama instructor at Hollywood High School, working there for 25 years. Ruth was his collaborator and confidant and the costumer for all of his productions. Together, they fed, mentored, and served as surrogate parents for hundreds of theater students, opening up their home and hearts and changing the course of many young lives. Among their many creative endeavors and interests, Ruth and Jerry shared a lifelong pursuit of book collecting. Her library of rare Mother Goose books was actually purchased by the Los Angeles Central Library. Their largest collection was devoted to the history of Hawaii. Ruth and Jerry visited the islands together more than 30 times. Even her memorial, this past weekend, had a Lua theme. Ruth and Jerry had four children, Gregory, Kathleen, Stephen, and Mary, to whom they devoted their deepest affection. After her daughter Katie passed away in 1996, she and Jerry took Katie's children, Jackie and Chase, into their homes. Since Jerry's passing in 2002, she remained a devoted mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother. Ruth Powell Melton passed away peacefully, surrounded by her family, on January 4th, 2014. A great individual with a huge heart and gave a lot of herself to others. May she rest in peace.
Uh, other adjourning motions? Any other adjourning motions? Then I'll take a moment, if I may, members, to adjourn in the memory of, uh, my neighbor. She, Juliette Alsobrook. She lived two doors, uh, north of me. She, uh, passed away, uh, January 11th of, of this year. Uh, we didn't even know that, that she was ill. She passed of cancer and she had, it was a very quick, uh, I mean, it just moved quickly. She was a little, little bitty woman, as nice as she could be and unbelievably strong. I mean, and she was 85 pounds soaking wet. And I would watch her working in the garden and moving the trash up and, up and back. And whenever I would come home, we would have a conversation. I don't know if this ever happens to you, but sometimes maybe you wake up early in the morning and you, you really don't have time to, to get it together. You're going outside to get the newspaper. And your, your, your hair looks like, my father used to say, your hair looks like cats are sucking in it. And I had on this old robe with about 12 holes in it. But every time my wife throws it away, I'd take it out of the trash. And I would look for her every morning to make sure she wasn't outside. So that she would not see me look the way that I did. But she would catch me every time. And it got to a point where I didn't care. And we would have conversations on a, a regular basis. Her father, um, Jack Alsobrook lived to be 90-plus. And, and he passed away not too long ago. And it really devastated her. And she would talk to me about this, uh, every morning. And when she found out that my mother, uh, passed away for over three months, every morning like clockwork, she'd send me some scripture or some kind of a, a positive message to make it easier for me to, uh, uh, make it through the day. She was a dear and she was a sweetheart. Uh, you know how I'm always trying to get people to adopt dogs? She had a dog the size of a lion. How she walked that dog, who now barks, when he barks, the whole community barks. I, I'm just so saddened and devastated that she will not be out there in the mor- in fact, I, every day I look over to her house. So I would ask that, oh, and for a lot of you, she was the wife of, um, Ernie Roberts of PV Jobs, who, uh, has been there. I'm sure a lot of you that, uh, work with them know, know Ernie. So she was, uh, his wife. She had a, 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 a young son and several, uh, stepchildren. She will be missed. And I will be at her funeral tomorrow at 11:00 AM at Saint Augustine's Catholic Church in Culver City. No more adjourning motions. With that said, members, this council is adjourned.